Good evening, welcome to the April 20th, 2021 regular meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have emergency exits on all sides of the auditorium. We are being livestreamed directly from the high school auditorium, also on YouTube and the school channel, so thanks for joining us this evening. Tonight's a preliminary budget hearing and also a public hearing for the Code of Conduct, and we're happy to have you here. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chang because we have some special guests tonight. First, I'll introduce some of our staff members who are here. We have Dr. Brian Zouar, our Director of the Arts, Mr. John Murphy, our high school principal. We also have Ms. Suzanne Flanagan, our executive assistant, and we have Mr. Matt Cobb, he's our, one of our media specialists in the office, so thanks for joining us here. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chang, and we're going to welcome our students. We're so happy to have some students here this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the great things about going through school year is to be able to celebrate our accomplishments as well as honor those students who have given so much to the school experience. So I am extremely excited to get another level of normalcy to be able to recognize those who are with us today, and I will start out by yielding the floor to Mr. John Murphy, Principal of the High School, to introduce us to our valedictorian and salutatorian.
Thank you, Mr. Chang, Ms. Hackett, board members. So each year, we recognize and salute the valedictorian and salutatorian for the class of 2021. Now granted, the valedictorian and salutatorian are designations for the students with the two highest grade point averages in the graduating class, but to define either of these students by numerical grade point average is a disservice, and I'd like you to humor me for a few minutes to introduce them for both their accomplishments as valedictorian and salutatorian, but more importantly, how they got there. So after I finish embarrassing you, if you could please come up, the valedictorian this year is Mr. Ethan Steer, and if the new definition of being well-rounded means that you have to do everything, then Ethan, I guess, is our classic definition. Granted, he does have the highest grade point average, and he exceeded even the fullest requirements for the IB diploma by taking our most rigorous and demanding coursework, and excelled at them, but that is just a sliver of Ethan. While doing that, he found the time to become an accomplished musician, both in our jazz ensemble, in our pit orchestra, and then took it upon himself as a dedicated pianist to take lessons hours and hours a week. He's not just a pianist, he's also a scientist, and spent time at the Johns Hopkins Program for Talented Youth, focusing on physics, engineering, and chemistry, our summer research program, and taking both IB chemistry and IB physics at the higher level. Ethan's also an athlete, yay runners, as a cross-country athlete, indoor winter track, just to round off his day. And as you can tell by his resume, he has a lot of free time, so when he's not doing that, he's working with the stage crew for the student-directed plays, he works with his church group, and went on two separate missions to repair and fix housing for the underprivileged and the homeless, one in South Carolina and one in California. I'm just tired reading that, but in the midst of that, he managed to be an exceptional student and, more importantly, a great human being. So congratulations to Mr. Ethan Steer. And your punishment is now you have to stand while I talk about Sophia, and then we'll take a photo together. Thanks, Ethan. This year's salutatorian, someone who I've had the privilege of knowing for four years, again, I don't want to pare down her entire existence into a few words, but the word that comes to mind when I think of Sophia Romano is radical humility. There's very few people on the planet that I've met that puts other people first on a consistent and holds herself to such a high standard, more so than anyone that she's surrounded by. She's a giver, whether it's as a tutor, soccer coach, as a youth leader, and a Hobie Award recipient when she was in the 10th grader. She took it upon herself to, as president of an organization called Top Soccer, to teach and coach soccer to children with cognitive and physical disabilities. She's a four-year member of our student government, as an elected official this year as the class of 2021 Vice President, and that was not a label or an identifier. She took it very seriously and was a serious advocate just for herself and for those who don't have a voice in the building. And she was regularly at my meetings, I am not embarrassed to say, the adult in the room who offered measured, thoughtful feedback on a consistent basis. Like Ethan, she's also an athlete, soccer, track and field, and a National Merit-Comment Scholar. Like Ethan, she's a full IB diploma candidate and exceeded the requirements for that. You've given us more than you've received, Sophia, and I'm already starting to miss you guys. I know we're starting our exit strategy for the senior class, but collectively, if that's a template for success in the future, and the two of you, the last thing I would recommend is your grade point average. It's those accolades and the way you carry yourself that are the things that I'm most proud of. So congratulations to both Ethan and Sophia. Come on.
Congratulations. Very impressive group of students.
Would you like to tell us where you're going to school?
They don't know yet.
Please do.
May 1st commitment.
Congratulations, thank you so much. You guys are very impressive, beautiful.
Well deserved.
Back to you, Mr. Chang.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that I love about this world of education is that it is really all-encompassing, and this district really embodies the idea of a well-rounded education, and as part of that, some of our experiences that we have revolve around the musical nature of our students. And it just goes to show what we're able to do, it just goes to show the type of environment that we create, and just even the two examples of our valedictorian and salutatorian, the well-roundedness is kind of, I guess, amplified by our musical talent of our school district. So I'd like to bring up Dr. Zouar to recognize our All-State Musicians and Choral National Conference Award recipients.
Thank you, Mr. Chang, and thank you, Board of Education and District Administration and the community, for your continued support of our programs in the performing arts. It's been a challenging and unusual year, particularly for playing instruments and singing, but as we begin now to see the light at the end of the tunnel, I feel grateful that we've kept music in the lives of our children, and we've done so safely and successfully. This year, we're recognizing student musicians who participated in NISM All-State and ACDA virtual conferences. Now, I feel bad for them that they did not have the opportunity to go to these conferences in person, because that is a highlight, you know, of a student's experience here, but I think the important thing for us as a school community is to know that these students were recognized for their skills at the state level and at the national level with regard to the ACDA. So first, the following students who were NISM All-State musicians and participated in the All-State Conference and were qualified to perform in the virtual honors ensembles, and they were, if you're here, you can come up as I call your names. Matthew Byrne, violinist, Matthew, are you here? No? Joel Gregoire-Lincoln, soprano, Joel, thank you for coming up. Kirsten Quirk, soprano, Kirsten. Jack Richmond, bass, Jack is not here. So should we get all of them and the ACDA kids all together? Okay. So then the following students participated in the American Choral Directors Association's National Conference, and they qualified for the ACDA Student Leadership Conference, and they are Skylar DeLuca, Ariana Alamo, Jaden Wetstein, and Shannon Reeves. Are any of them here? Okay, so we have our All-State musicians here, so let's... And if I could just conclude by urging all of you to go to the school's website, because there's all kinds of goodies up on the website. If you go to departments and go to the arts, there's a whole area of that page for virtual performances. And, you know, we had a whole slew of winter concerts, you know, that went up in December. We had a jazz concert go up in the winter, and then during the course of the month of March, we had several of our teachers put up performances to celebrate music in our Schools Month. And also, on that same page, is our virtual art exhibits. There's one from the middle school, and then we recently had an all-county art exhibit that was virtual, but you could just click on it and look at all of the artwork from our art students. So I urge you all to take advantage of that webpage. Thank you.
Thank you. Always nice seeing you. We love having the students come. Congratulations again to our students, thanks for joining us. So nice to see you guys. Brings a lot of breath of fresh air to us to see our students. Before I move forward, just a quick couple of announcements. Mrs. Barry was unable to join us this evening, she is not feeling well, so we wish her the best, and she will be watching us from home this evening. Also, would like to take the opportunity to wish Dr. Leahy a very happy birthday. This is how she's spending her birthday with all of us up here, her home away from home, so thank you and happy birthday to Dr. Leahy. As I mentioned earlier, tonight's meeting is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. There will be an opportunity for visitors at three different points of the agenda later this evening. Once is regarding the 2021-2022 proposed budget, then for the Code of Conduct, public hearing, and finally, in our opportunity for visitors for general comments and questions. I will quickly review the rules associated with any member of the public who wishes to approach the microphone in any of those three scenarios. We will allot three minutes per guest, after which we will ask you to wrap up your comments or questions to allow for another member of the community his or her fair chance. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address before making your comment or asking your questions. You will be restricted to one visit to the microphone at each portion of the agenda, and a three-minute limit. The district clerk will be keeping time for us tonight. You are not permitted to address any individual member of the Board, nor may you mention the name of a student, staff member, or community member, and if these rules are violated, we may ask you to step down from the microphone. So we, of course, welcome the participation of the public, this is always a great place to do it, we encourage the community to use these meetings as a place they can raise questions or make comments, and we're happy to be here with you. So I just have a quick, couple of reminders for everybody. Our annual election and budget vote will be held on May 18th from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium. We currently have four candidates running for two seats on the Board of Education. In alphabetical order, they are Kelly Barry, Liz Dion, Erica Messier, and Nancy Turnblaser. And I'd like to thank all of the candidates for putting their hats in the ring for our Board of Education, thank you very much. Our district clerk has been receiving questions regarding absentee ballots. There was an executive order that was actually expiring today for voters to request an absentee ballot for quote-unquote "fear of contracting COVID." That order, though set to expire, was extended today. Right now, it is extended until May 6th. Our attorney had indicated that a bill had been presented to the governor, and it was likely that he would extend it, and it's likely to be extended again. Statewide, it is assumed that if approved, voters can use temporary illness or physical disability to request a ballot, and we will continue to keep the public updated and have that information available on our website. The PTA Council will host a Candidates Forum on May 4th. This event will be held live, is it in the high school or the middle school auditorium? High school auditorium, thank you, and will be livestreamed and recorded. Viewers can watch it on YouTube and on the school channel, and information about that will also be forthcoming. So we're going to now pass it over to Mr. Chang, and Mr. Chang, I know we had an event today that I thought, you know, when we create our agenda, we don't know what things are going to be popping up, but I think because something occurred today, we should address it, and that was that we had gotten word that there was a situation in a nearby town, and Rockville Center Schools had made the decision not to go into an official lockdown based off of information we were given, so I want to turn that over to you, maybe we could have a conversation about that.
Thank you, Madam President. Around 11:30, we had gotten word that there was an active shooter situation over in West Hempstead, the Stop and Shop there. Immediately, what we did was we went into information gathering mode, I was on the phone multiple times with our local police, as well as the information that they were getting, and just ensuring that we were in the best position that we needed to be in, and if there was any concern about us going into lockdown. At the moment, they did not advise that we go into locking people out or locking them down, based on the information that they had and that they were relaying to us. We knew that there was a distance away, and any moment if it was to change, we knew that we could activate any one of our security measures into place. Most importantly to note, we already knew that we had our doors locked. We have security protocols on a day-to-day basis. In the event anything is to happen, we have security guards, we have people on alert. So what we did was we took that information, gave it to our administrators so that they can make their staff and everybody else aware, and just to be on the ready in terms of if we got different information from the police, that we would then go into effective lockdown or lockout. One of the things that was great about our relationship, and I've always had a great relationships with the police chiefs or commissioners that I've worked with, is that we had an open dialogue, it was almost an hour, every hour on the hour that we were having a conversation, whether it be just a quick update, nothing has changed, okay, we have some information, and again, people are pinging me with different types of information, so just getting some clarification on that gave us a sense of what we should be doing and knowing that we're in a good position. Once we got in the word, we followed their directors, I also got on the phone with several of the districts in terms of them being locked down or not, and we know that there was some people who were more on the western side of the border, as well as closer to West Hempstead, had gone into lockdown, but they also lifted their lockdowns a few hours after that had gone into place, and most of the people who were east of us and south of us had not gone into lockdown. So just kind of keeping in perspective, distance, and also listening to our police, which is advisable, we want to make sure that we trust our relationships, that's where we're going to get the most effective information, and that's kind of how today progressed. Certainly, certainly, I understand the anxiety, I've been doing this for a long time now, have been around, a lot of the information that has saddened us and has worried many of us, and I certainly understand the anxiety and what people might have felt about what we should be doing, shouldn't be doing, I get it, we want to make sure that we take the cautious path, and we certainly want to make sure that we don't ever do anything to put us at a disadvantage in terms of safety, that is our first priority always, and we considered all those things, but knowing that we're in direct contact again with those who have the best information, who we would rely on to protect us, is the best advisement that I've always been given, and we followed today. I've returned a lot of phone calls directly to people who had concerns, and I think hearing directly from me in terms of what the thinking and the process was, was great, we just tried to get the information out to the public in terms of, we understand the situation, and we want to make sure that you know that our kids are safe. And the police were great again in terms of just listening to us, and we had asked it just as an extra layer of security precaution, we know we had a lot of after-school playoff things that were happening, we had asked them to come by and be at our school grounds during dismissal as well as during those playoffs, and, you know, it was great that the Nassau County Police also acted very quickly, and they were able to get the person of interest in custody before even we even went to our further activities. But we were at no point in danger, according to the information that we were getting, and we're not afraid to pull those triggers and say we need to be on lockdown or lockout. One of the things that I also learned in just my previous experiences is that a lot of parents initially, just, and it's understandable, I completely understand the reactions that would come out, is to go and pick up their kids. And, you know, a lot of times, when real situations happen, when we say there's a lockdown or a lockout, parents wouldn't have access to those kids, so just kind of considering some of those things and making sure that we're, we call those things when we need to and when we know that we are in our straits, but that comes directly from the conversations that we have with our local authorities, and we'll continue that partnership moving forward.
Thank you for the information, and I did feel for all the parents today, it was a tough day for everybody, it was scary, see things happening around us and wondering how it was going to affect us, I'd like to thank our principals for, you know, having put all those, helping us put those measures in place from years ago where we really did find new ways to secure our buildings. It was really, I'm happy we've done that, that made me feel good today, and I did see that police presence that you mentioned around town, and I'd really like to thank our police force for that as well, that was really very helpful, so thank you for the update. I thought we should address it, it was timely and it happened today.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Pass over back to you for the rest of your report, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that are, you know, as we are combating COVID fatigue and everything in terms of what we dealt with this year, I'm happy to say again, South Nassau has provided another avenue for us to, you know, protect ourselves as well as now our students. We recently put out information today that was in conjunction with South Nassau, the information that they will have a student pod that's opening in the same location that we had for our teachers. A link went out for those ages 16 to 17 and 18 to register for their first dose appointment, so we're getting those out there as well. If you have any questions, please feel free to, you know, get in contact with our nursing staff and get any further information that you need, but we're excited about that and being able to provide that for our students. In terms of COVID, just again, we are constantly getting updates, and we recently got an update about a week and a half ago on a Friday evening where there were some revisions to the CDC guidelines, which then affected the state guidelines, and then the state and the county decided that they are going to adopt what the state is putting out in terms of the Health Department. We are continuing to evaluate those guidelines very carefully, and as I wrote in my letter and in the livestream and spoke about, is that we are not changing what we are currently doing right now, in terms of just evaluating what is best for us and how we are able to keep our schools open for all our students, since we've already instituted a plan to bring all our students back well before many of the districts had an even opportunity to come back. I just also heard on the news in terms of a couple of school districts that canceled their reopening plans due to whatever guidance that they may have gotten, but what we're going to do is we're going to take advisement, we're going to look at it very carefully, we're going to make the best decisions and adaptations as needed, but stay tuned, if there are any changes, we will definitely let you know. I plan to meet with the reopening committee just to update them on some of the details of what it is that we're doing and what's actually working for us, and then look to any further guidance from the state as well as the Health Department and as well as our medical professionals here before we do anything, but you will hear from us if there are any changes that need to be made and how those changes will affect our students. Again, we have, we have two months, which is, I believe, less than 45 days to go to flip a switch on a change, particularly when we've already changed, it's going to be extremely disruptive to not only our students but also to our educators. What part of the reason why I believe in our success and that we've had a great relationship with those who regulate the quarantining is they feel confident that we're able to keep people safe with the procedures that we have in place, so we'll continue to do those unless they tell us otherwise, and I know that we've asked for some continuity as well as consistency, that's a message that we're sharing across the board, I think from boards also to superintendents, I think that's something that we are desperately craving as well, so maybe that will also come down the line. So stay tuned, and we'll keep you updated on that. I'd also kind of like to yield the floor to our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, but before I do, I just want to caveat the reason why I am doing so. We, she recently went with the Director of Curriculum as well as one of our principals virtually to a LYSI event to talk about equity, diversity, and inclusion. That is something that is, one, also part of not only our bylaws but things that we hold very dear here at Rockville Center. It's a history lesson that I've gotten since I've been here. Equity work is something that's been happening long before I came, and it's something that we continuously grow and try to work on. One of the important things as we look at equity, diversity, inclusion, and just a safe place for all people to be able to express themselves, and all being our students, is to be able to make sure that our teachers are trained, and the level of training that we get because of the sensitivity and the age levels, that we want to make sure that it's age-appropriate and classroom-appropriate for all. So I'm glad that our leaders and our leadership is pursuing this knowledge of growing through professional development, which is a big part also of Rockville Center, and I'm just inviting Dr. Sempino to talk a little bit about LYSI and what they take away from their talking points.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. As Mr. Chang had said, work in equity in Rockville Center is not new. Our former superintendent, Dr. Johnson, had the mantra of "all means all," and it was giving the best education to everyone. We've always looked at data, including subgroup data, which we had to do with No Child Left Behind, and we had to do with ESSA NOW, the Every Student Succeeds Act. We have been members of LYSI, the Long Island Consortium for Excellence and Equity, I think over 15 years, and some of the principals there are Supporting District and School Leadership for Equity and Eliminating Achievement Gaps, Enhancing District's Response to Struggling Diverse Learners, and Nurture a More Effective Family-Community Partnership. There's been a shift, though, in the last two years, and it's, you might have heard the words "cultural responsiveness," so where it was equity, "cultural responsiveness" has kind of the umbrella term, which really is a shift to more social-emotional learning, and everything we do without oversimplifying it, because nothing is simple, especially in COVID, is we're looking at everything through the lens of respect and dignity for all, and we want students to like who they are, express pride and confidence in their identity, and that's all part of social-emotional learning. We want to give our teachers the tools to be able to deal with this crazy world that we're in and everything that's come up. And to be clear, just, I want to, there is no new curriculum, we are information gathering and training staff, we're working with the principals, we're working with our new superintendent, and we're looking at guidance from New York State on cultural responsiveness. There is a framework that four principles are welcoming and affirming environment, that's SEL, high expectations and challenging instruction, inclusive curriculum, and ongoing professional development and support, and we really want to be mindful, reflect on who is in our classrooms, support all students' learning, and develop their voice, and it's really important to us, and we really want to train teachers to be able to do that, and to look at materials, and to be able to ask questions to administrators and for us to be able to help and guide them. So at this point, we are working with our teachers and our staff, and it's an ongoing journey, and we are a work in progress. Thank you, Mr. Chang.
Thank you, Dr. Sempino. So that is what we're doing in our school district as of right now, we're going to continue to go on, we have a lot of things to look forward to, and, you know, tonight we'll talk about our budget, something that we should all kind of feel valued in, and the value...
And we're looking at guidance from New York State on culture responsiveness. There is a framework that four principles are welcoming and affirming environment, that's SEL, high expectations and challenging instruction, inclusive curriculum, and ongoing professional development and support. And we really want to be mindful, reflect on who is in our classrooms, support all students' learning, and develop their voice. And it's really important to us and we really want to train teachers to be able to do that and to look at materials and to be able to ask questions to administrators and for us to be able to help and guide them. So, at this point, we are working with our teachers and our staff and it's an ongoing journey and we are a work in progress. Thank you, Mr. Chang.
Thank you, Dr. Sampino. So, that is what we're doing in our school district as of right now. We're going to continue to go on. We have a lot of things to look forward to. And, you know, tonight we'll talk about our budget, something that we should all kind of feel valued in and the value of what we want for our school district is represented in this budget. And I look forward to just having that dialogue continue tonight. And with that, my report, I yield the floor back. Madam President.
Thank you. I'd like to make two more points. We also have a very special event happening this weekend, the Rockville Center Ed Foundation, which is their first annual trivia night in, which was because they couldn't have their annual gala. And I believe you can still support the foundation. So, we had sent out emails about it and you could look at their website. And I just want to say once again how wonderful the Ed Foundation has been to the students of Rockville Center. We really do thank them. I hope you'll look into their event or ways that you can support them. That event is this Saturday on the 24th. Mr. Chang, one other thing, we had gotten a letter today in the community about the spectators policy. We had gotten questions. I thought maybe we could also talk about that. There's been kind of an evolution here with spectators in sports. First of all, we were happy to get sports back, even though the seasons were truncated a bit, maybe not exactly what we expected. We see a huge turnout across the board in students participating in our sports, trying out for sports. That was a wonderful thing to see, just like our arts and the available clubs that we had. We were able to then open two seats per home athlete. And then we were also able to offer seats to our visiting athletes as well. Now, we're able to take it one step further and open that up to seniors in certain scenarios. I thought maybe we should mention that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We started actually today allowing seniors to be able to access the fields where we could appropriately keep our distance and stay within the guidelines that have been put out for us. And that's, that's big, again. Fans and students and peers being able to be around and cheering for their fellow athletes as well as their friends is big for us. So, what we did was we, not only were able to, we're, it's kind of like what we've been doing all year. We've progressed. We've tried one thing. We've seen what everyone else is doing and then we tried something else and we continue to grow on that. So, as of right now, based on the space and the availability, particularly because we're outside and with the new guidance that came out with two athletes and 200 spots, what we did was we were, where we can and where we're able to with spacing available, we are opening it up to seniors who want to come and be a part of the sporting event, which is a big step for us. And then we'll continue to look at that, evaluate it, and see where we end up next.
Thank you. I know that was a hot topic. We had heard from many parents. We had an athletic advisory committee recently. It also was raised there. And I'm happy we could find a solution to that. So, thank you for working with Mrs. Rosseto on that. We appreciate that.
And they've worked really hard, like I, if I may, Madam President. I get text messages with photos of, like, people are out there measuring things out, making sure. I mean, it's not for lack of effort. And one thing that I would love to get across is that, look, if I could say yes to everything, I would. And sometimes we're just handcuffed by the rules that they give us. But I love the effort that we've been putting in. I love the fact that we've been able to think differently, look at things differently, and try to be very solution-oriented in a lot of these things. So, kudos to Mrs. Rosseto as well as her staff and her coaching staffs.
I'm happy that the kids can get the support from their peers and feel good about themselves. Before we move on, I'll open it up to any board questions for the superintendent.
With regard to the athletic policy, when you say guidelines, is that the guidelines that came from Section 8?
So, there are, there's yes and no because Section 8 hasn't put anything else out about after what we've got the spectators guidelines out. So, I, we are, most of them are very much aligned in terms of what they're doing except for the number of percentages of whether or not 200, it's either 200 or two spectators based on the capacity level that they give us. Luckily for us, we don't really have that issue because ours holds the amount to the limit of 200. Or it's based on the capacity that is limited to the space that we have and we're able to provide that for the two parents and then also for our students to go. So, we're going off of the guidance that was given out by the state at this point.
So, the state, not Section 8?
Yeah. But Section 8 could come out with something and at that point, we would have to follow Section 8.
Right. There was a chart from Section 8. That's why I was just wondering if, because it appeared that each district had answered certain questions on the chart to athletes, whether they were doing indoor and outdoor, and there were options on there. And I wasn't sure if that was the guidance we were following or if it was the state guidance.
We're following the state guidance right now.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Chang?
No, I think you've covered it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to our committee reports. I was told the Finance Committee hasn't met, but is there any update from anybody that's associated with the Finance Committee? I know Mr. Bartels, you have a big portion coming up, so we'll maybe let you off the hook right now. Anything else from you guys? No? Okay.
If Mr. Bartels doesn't have something, then...
Right. Well, he's got plenty to say, but we'll just, we'll wait a little longer. The Curriculum Committee, I believe, is also meeting in the coming days or in the next week, so there was no report as well, correct?
Right. We had a meeting scheduled that had to be postponed. And so, that meeting is postponed until tomorrow, so we don't have a report for tonight.
So, we'll have it for next time.
We'll have it next time.
And we did get a nice report from Dr. Sampino, nice update. Thank you very much. So, moving on to the Policy Committee, and that will be Mrs. Dion.
Yes, the Policy Committee met last week. Mrs. Hackett, Mrs. Wong, Mr. Chang, Dr. Leahy, Mr. Murphy, and myself. We wanted to review Policy 3170, the memorial policy. At our last board meeting, we discussed, the policy has been at stage one. We discussed the policy and wanted to include language regarding celebrating life and supporting the well-being and mental health of our students and staff. Additionally, following accepted post-vention protocols, it was decided that yearbook tribute pages would become part of the prohibited activities. Mr. Murphy informed us that PPS staff has raised concerns about the district providing transportation to funerals. And we will continue the conversation and gather some background information to share with the entire board and the public. Tonight, 3170 will be discussed. It continues to be on stage one right now. And Mr. Murphy will, we're suggesting, be invited to our next meeting on May 6th so he can provide additional information regarding the transportation issues.
Thank you. I know we are going to discuss the policy coming up, but is there any other question for the Policy Committee at this time? Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Dion. And finally, for committees, topics related to PPS, SEL, mental health, and student services, Mrs. Farazani.
The Committee on Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services met on April 2nd. Present were Dr. Leahy, Superintendent Chang, myself, and Trustee O'Shea. The summer program information was given out with regards to registration. And parents were encouraged to register early to ensure children enroll in their preferred classes and to take advantage of the early bird discounts. We're very excited about the summer program. For a vaccine update, there have been three vaccination clinics held at Mount Sinai-South Nassau Hospital Annex. The second group received their second shot last week. Any remaining staff members who are not vaccinated due to the proximity to a COVID diagnosis would be provided with a link to register for their vaccine in the future. Mount Sinai-South Nassau has also announced a student pod, which was created for this week. The information to register is on South Nassau-Mount Sinai website and they also put it on their Facebook page. And I understand that today, a second student pod will be announced as well and that will be available in the coming weeks. So, we would like to thank Mount Sinai-South Nassau for their cooperation with the school district in keeping us safe. The National Longitudinal Transition Study. The district has participated in this study since 2012. The study analyzes data with regard to graduating students with special needs. Phase 3 has commenced and the district will be sending data regarding graduates, grading policies, courses, and other information as they had in 2012 and in 2017. That's the report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Farazani or a member of the committee?
I just, one quick question. The summer program, I had heard it basically sold out already. Is this true?
Dr. Leahy would have the updated information on that, so I defer to her.
The summer program is definitely not sold out. The students, some of the classes, individual classes have closed because they reached capacity very, very quickly. I think we have pretty close to 450 students registered for the enrichment program already. So, there's still lots of fun things to do. We do encourage you to go in and take a look.
That's amazing. Thank you. It's a lot of students. That's wonderful. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bartels. I'll let Mr. Chang put you on the spot, but get your glass of water ready. We are going to move into our budget portion of the evening or for the 2021-2022 budget?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to prolong this with long thoughts that I have, but I could say that we've put in a lot of work and we were extremely happy with the results in terms of the amount of work that we did prior to the influx in terms of state aid that we have received, which now helps us in terms of some of the other thinking and the foresight that we had, the strategy behind what we're trying to build here and continuing to maintain that level of excellence for our students. So, with that, I believe this, again, this budget represents that wholeheartedly and puts into perspective a lot of the things that we need to kind of get in order and continue to build on for remaining years. And everything is about sustainability. It's not just about, you know, can we do it this year? But it's always really thinking about what can we do moving forward. So, with that, I will introduce Assistant Superintendent Mr. Bartels to walk us through the proposed 2021-2022, I can't believe I'm saying '22, budget proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. We are at the stage in the budget for the preliminary budget hearing. This is the last time at which we can make changes to the budget. There will be one more formal budget hearing in early May. At that time, we cannot make any changes to the budget. And then we'll have our budget vote on May 18th. To remind everybody where we were at the last presentation, our budget increase was 0.48%, so less than a half percent, with no increase in the tax levy for next year. So, with some of the changes in the budget and some of the additional revenues we were getting, we were able to keep no increase in the tax levy. Now, when I say that, that means the school district is not going to collect any more in taxes next year than we are this year. That does not mean individual homeowners will not see a change in their taxes. Any change, either up or down, is going to be solely due to changes in their assessments that were done by Nassau County. So, we don't receive any additional revenue based on those changes. The items that we had included in that budget were, we're going to put in kindergarten specials for all kindergarten classes so they would get art, music, and phys ed, as well as the rest of the grades. We had an additional math teacher for support at the elementary level, an additional reading teacher for ELA support. We were talking about going up one or two, but we had one in there. We had an additional elementary guidance counselor. We have one, so this would give us two at the elementary level. We had a small percentage increase in staffing for, specialized staffing for the RISE program going to the middle school, an allocation for an American Sign Language program in the high school for the equivalent of two classes, an increase in our CSE/CPSC administrative support. We had one person working the equivalent of half-time, so this would be another increase of half-time to bring it to a full-time position. And we had Chromebooks to be available for middle school and high school, or middle school and high school students. So, what has changed since the last time we talked? We had a new state budget was enacted. We did an analysis of that. School district received an additional $1.2 million in foundation aid. And that's extremely important because that's part of a base aid, so it's not an expense-driven aid. It's not some other changing aid, a one-time aid. This is a continuing aid that we'll be getting. In addition, the state has indicated, and again, this is not a guarantee, but they've indicated that the school district would be made whole in foundation aid over the next three years. So, this would be the first of the three years. This additional $1.2 million brings us to about $7 million and our full foundation aid figure is approximately 10, a little over $10 million. So, that would be another $1.5 million each in the next two years, which would be absolutely fabulous in terms of support for the school district. We do need to be cautious that, to see what happens as we go through this year and into next, to see if that continues to pan out. But that's, that's what they're indicating to us at this point. But we're just very happy that that number is in there as far as increasing the base. So, with that additional state aid, we again took another look at our budget. One of the things that we had done was cut back in the budget, our transfer to capital line for maintenance of the buildings. We had $1.8 million in there. We had reduced that to $900,000. In looking at all of the requests, we wanted to try to cover as many of them as possible. And one of the big requests that we had was for replacing the playgrounds. And we wanted to try to do that for Covert, Riverside, and Hewitt. I have $300,000 increase in that line to go from 900 to 1.2 million. And that should cover the majority of the capital projects that were requested. And a couple of slides I'll go through very quickly, the different capital projects that are in, included for all of the buildings. When we did one of our presentations, one of the analysis we did was the principal budgets. So, the principals put together their own budgets for materials and supplies in their buildings, which did not include any other main building costs or staffing costs. The numbers range somewhere from $77 to $92 per student. Those numbers really have not increased in the last 15 years. They've been, their budgets have been pretty standard. But there was a difference based on the per pupil amounts as the numbers of students in the different buildings has changed over the years. At one point, we had equalized it. It's kind of changed since then, so we wanted to kind of re-equalize it and give everybody a little bit of an increase so the building principals would have a little bit more to address the students and their materials. So, we looked at a $95 per student number for all the elementary schools and the middle school. That would be an increase of about $47,000 to do that and equalize it for all the buildings. One of the buildings we're having a lot of space issues in is Wilson School. So, what we've done is we've gone over and looked at Central Synagogue. They had space available that they could provide to us. So, we've taken a look at that space and I've identified two classrooms that could be utilized, which could be completely separated from the rest of the building. They're two very large classroom spaces, so they could be utilized as two individual rooms or broken down into more than those two rooms. And there's also a bathroom in that section, so we would put up a wall and be able to separate those rooms. We'd have our own separate entrance, which is basically directly across from one of the exits of Wilson School. So, it'd be a very short walk, very similar to the walk they have going to their current portable building. The cost for that would be about, we're looking at somewhere around a $50,000 lease expense plus other nominal expenses that may, we may need to modify the building or provide for, for example, if we add air conditioning to the classrooms right now, I don't think they have air conditioning in those two rooms. If we wanted to add air conditioning, we could do something like that. So, we have $60,000 allocated for that to provide space relief for Wilson. We wanted to add that second new reading teacher. Talked about in that other slide. We had added one. We want to make sure we have two reading teachers added to provide ELA support for our struggling students. So, that's another $100,000. We're looking at the secondary level to add either a social worker or guidance counselor. Want to look at and evaluate the needs for our social-emotional issues that we have and we want to make sure we get the right individual in there. That would be $100,000 for a staff member working to support students. We also, a small addition that was omitted with all the changes in our instructional software programs, went back and forth, we had actually omitted about 35... software programs, went back and forth, we had actually omitted about $35,000 of some of our software programs. We wanted to make sure that was included within the budget. So those are our recommendations to add back to the budget. That would bring us to a new budget increase of 1%, even, actually 1.00%. All of those new recommendations total about $642,000, which would be completely funded through an increase in our state aid revenue. So we would use that funding to cover all those increases. So our tax levy increase would still be 0%. We do not want to increase the tax levy for next year. We know how important that is for whole community members. Just to go through quickly the capital projects that we have in, last time I presented, I kind of showed capital projects that were done for the current year, as long as some other projects that were requested that we're working on with our maintenance staff and we're trying to get through for this year. So these are the ones that we have kind of identified for the budget, the total $1.2 million budget for next year. In Covert, drop ceiling and new lighting in the auditorium, and a playground replacement. At Hewitt School, bathroom floor replacements in the boys' and girls' bathrooms, which there would be 10 of those. We have to install drop ceilings in five classrooms. We had, Hewitt had asked us last year for a number of classrooms to get drop ceilings, so we had done some last year. We're going to do five more this year. Need to replace window frames for screens, which are giving us some problems. Steam trap repairs, there's been some concern about steam traps, so we have an allowance of $20,000 to do some of those repairs. We really need to evaluate the total extent of that, but we thought we'd put in an allowance for that. We have to replace their playground at Hewitt School. There was a concern about falling snow on the roof, so we have $20,000 in for looking at that, trying to address that and any other roofing repairs that might be necessary. Their phone system replacement, we're looking at about a $10,000 expense for that. At Riverside, we have in to replace their playground as well. Their playfield area has been a concern, becomes very muddy. One of the options we've looked at is replacing it with turf. So whether we do that or some other option, we have $100,000 allocated, which would definitely be able to do that. At Watson, we've been replacing lighting in various classrooms. We have three more that we need to do. They're looking to replace their gym ceiling and provide new lighting, and also to replace the custodial ceiling, which needs some replacement. And they wanted to add a camera for the project-grade door. At Wilson School, we're looking to do some resurfacing on the outdoor basketball court, repair some of their playground surfacing, some of the blacktop around the playground, and to add a larger walkway to the basketball court. We do have some concerns about their playground. It's in better shape than the other playgrounds, and we are still looking at those space issues at Wilson if we do continue to talk about that. And we talk about a bond issue. Looking at additional space at Wilson, we need to have a bond issue to address that, and we would hope to do all of that work at the same time if we're going to do a playground and a building addition. At the middle school, we just had a large project to repair the masonry, so that kind of took care of the building envelope. This would repair all the interior spaces where we've had water damage inside. Again, I'm not sure exactly what the extent that we're going to need to, but we have an allowance of about $40,000 to at least begin those repairs. We have floor tile repairs in some rooms, repairing some floor pipes and ceiling repair on the fourth floor. We have some repairs in the principal's office around their air conditioning unit. We want to upgrade the nurses' bathroom, as well as the special ed bathroom, and we need to make some auditorium ceiling tile repairs. At the high school, we're looking to make some office updates in the attendance office, which is really paint and furniture. We want to renovate the two lobby bathrooms, along with the nurses' office bathroom and the floor in the nurses' office, and also repair ventilation in one of the exam rooms in the nurses' office. Lastly, we have an allocation for asbestos abatements. In many of these projects, we find we have to do abatements, so this would address any of those issues that we find, whether we're doing flooring repairs or bathroom upgrades and that sort of thing. And that's really it. So this is our timeline. You can see we're at April 20th, the preliminary budget hearing. We have the formal budget hearing on May 6th, as indicated, and then culminating in the annual election and budget vote on May 18th. And that's it.
Thank you so much. That's a lot of positive things to share. The 0% being the first and foremost positive thing you could share. Thank you. And for working in some of the newer numbers we got, we covered a lot of ground. I have a question as it relates to Wilson. We talked briefly about their playground. I know we also are looking at the space. We've already kind of looked at some architectural plans. If we were to go the bond route of the future, we have a general idea of where things might be placed on the Wilson property, correct?
Correct.
So what I'm asking is, if we're committing to three playgrounds that need to be done, but we know there's a fourth, could we at least commit to maybe considering it for next year? A bond is such a long-term project, and what I'm concerned about is, that is a way to get more space for, you know, the large space that they may need or common multipurpose sorts of rooms and things like that. But for a playground to wait a possible four to five years, if we know where things are going to be mapped out anyway, I'm just hoping that we can make a commitment to maybe put it back on as a priority next year, since we tried to prioritize some of the playgrounds this year.
Yeah, we absolutely can do that. We will have the same transfer to capital line in next year's budget as well. It will give us a little more time to take a look at it. And as I said, when we kind of had our insurance company and architects reviewing the playgrounds, Wilson's was in the best shape. We wanted to try to get as many playgrounds as we could in with this budget. And as you indicated, we do have some questions about the space, and hopefully we'll be in better position next year to make that decision and to be absolutely certain that, you know, we wouldn't touch that existing playground area to, you know, put something like that in there to make that change.
Okay, great. And when would we expect the construction on the Central Synagogue to be completed? How far before the start of school?
We would want to do that as soon as possible. So once the budget vote happens and we have a past budget, I would like to start immediately, you know, at the end of May, working on that bathroom, and I'd hope to finish it probably in early July.
So we'd be able to tour it and even have our parents have a chance to see it before the start of the school year? Okay.
Yes.
And also just to mention to the public, we will be having our PTA road shows from now through the election and the budget vote. So each one of the PTAs will be hosting a board member and administrator. So some of these specific things, if you're not with us tonight, but you have questions, you can attend your school's PTA meeting, jump on one of those virtual Zooms with us, and we will answer your questions as well. Thank you, Mr. Bartels. I'll open up to any questions from board members related to the budget?
With regard to the space that would be leasing from the temple, do we know the term of the lease or how long we're looking to lease the space, since we would be doing some improvements to their building if we weren't going to get an abatement on our rent and lease? Do we know how long we would be renting that property in order to make it worth our while to put in improvements to a building that we don't own?
I would think we'd be leasing it for a minimum of three years. That would be at least how long it will take before we actually get a bond issue going, get it done, get the design done, get the approvals from the state, and get it bid out and construction underway and completed. So I would think a minimum of three years.
Thank you.
Mrs. Deion?
Just to reiterate, the playgrounds will be designed by whom? Because I know that was a big question.
We are gathering information right now. I've already had our direct facilities contact some playground manufacturers to get information. We will actually have to have them meet with each of the buildings. Each of the playgrounds has different space requirements and different needs. I know one of the concerns we always have is swings. Do we want to have swings on the playgrounds or not? That provides, you know, it takes up a lot of space and could provide other play opportunities if we did not have them, but those are going to be individual building-level decisions. So we will work with each building separately and then probably put out bids together for all the equipment.
Beautiful. And at Riverside, the turf, is this a, this is a request from the building?
This is a request from the building, yes.
So everybody at the building knows this? It wouldn't be a surprise if we put down turf there?
Correct.
Okay. And we're not going to use the rubber infill for this? We would use something different? That would be a little...
Right. It would be a separate infill. We had this looked at when we were hoping to have it done by a grant, so we know what the cost is to actually do it. We will go back and revisit it with Riverside just to make sure this is what they want. They may want to revisit it with their PTA, make a, you know, notice out to their community just to reiterate what the plan is.
Well, sometimes turf can be, I don't want to use the word, I don't want to use that word, but some people don't like it. So I think we just need to make sure everybody knows this is what our plan is, and we can talk about it and make a decision, an informed decision. So. And I, because I have to say it again, we have a lot of increases in our staffing. This can continue. Next year, we're not going to be, we're not going to be pushed back and have to make cuts. This is a plan that we can continue going forward.
Yes. I don't see any issue in the near future with sustaining the
That's the word I was looking for.
Additional staffing that we're putting in place. We were able to increase our fund balance last year with, you know, savings we had from not spending money in the spring of last year. So we were able to put some money away there. We'll be able to add some additional monies at the end of this year. Again, those are monies that we'll have in reserves to, again, to continue to support the budget going forward. We were able to get a zero tax levy increase for next year with these changes. I'm looking to be in good shape for next year's budget process as well. And the state aid numbers that we have, as I mentioned, look very solid. They had not looked great in prior years. The addition of the foundation aid is very important because it provides that base. If they do meet their commitments, as many of state legislators have said, and go to full foundation aid, we should be in fine shape going forward. Even if we don't, we'll be in very good shape.
That is wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes. Mr. Bartels, just going down the list real quick. I have a few things. Smartboard at Covert, can we look to install that in the ceiling instead of that? They've been talking about the trouble of pushing it around on a cart for years. So I know we've talked about it, but it's not listed here. That could be something we could add. Recently, we did some replacement parts on the Hewitt, Hewitt, Hewitt Playground? Is that true or...
Yes. Each year, we look at all of our playgrounds, and we make some changes based on equipment that is failing or that may be unsafe. There were two pieces on the Hewitt Playground. It was one, I think it was like the circular slide and another climbing structure that were really deemed to be unsafe and really needed to be replaced. So we replaced those two items this year. We've done similar replacements on other playgrounds in the past for different pieces of their structures that were failing or damaged or had become unsafe. So we always try to maintain the equipment that we have, but, you know, overall, all these playgrounds continue to deteriorate each year.
No, it's a great program we have. We keep our playgrounds as safe as we can. But do we look to possibly go to the same manufacturer to change the Hewitt Playground, to utilize the two new pieces of equipment we purchased?
We would absolutely want to try to utilize those two pieces. The climbing piece, depending on what the design of their playground is, the climbing piece may or may not fit. The slide piece will definitely fit in whatever new playground structure they want.
I'm looking at the numbers allocated. How does a playground at Riverside, how do we think to spend $150,000 and then build a bigger playground at Hewitt and spend $150,000? How does that work out?
Well, again, these are budget figures. They're based, you know, we wanted to try to equalize it amongst all the buildings. Each building has to look at their space and what they can do in their spaces. I don't know if we want to necessarily spend, you know, a great deal more at one building than another building, just because they may have a little bit more space. So I think we're looking to kind of equalize what we do in the different buildings, again, based on their space available in their buildings. So we want to give them that budget and allow them to see what best fits their needs.
I asked at the last meeting, could we look into getting some discount from the temple for doing the work in the bathroom? And you just spoke about adding air conditioners. And I could see their resistance for a one-year lease, but we're offering, we're approaching it as a three-year lease. Even if they give us a prorated discount per year or month over the term of our lease, I think that we need to get the money we're spending on a building that doesn't belong to us. So I mean, major, I mean, of course, we're going to paint and keep the building up, but if we're doing major capital, I think that we need to look to that very hard.
I understand.
We do own a trailer at St. Agnes, and, you know, has anybody looked at that for if it needs paints or ceilings or anything like that?
I know it is reviewed every year. I have not heard anything from our facilities director or our insurance company or St. Agnes about any concerns they have.
Can we look to get some kind of written report from Mr. Scalisi, possibly, just to make sure?
Sure.
And then we own the other, the maintenance building on Maple. Could we get the same type of report, something explaining, you know, is the facade of the building good? The grounds themselves good? The parking lot safe and all that? Just to, you know, just to keep track of it. Because we didn't, we didn't visit them this year. So we usually never visit them, actually. So it's, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bartels. I'm now going to open up the microphone to members of the public. Again, this portion is just for questions or comments related to the 2021-2022 budget. Hello, Mr. Greenfield.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the school board administration, Jeff Greenfield, citizen taxpayer, UBA Court. I want to thank you for the 0.00% increase. In my 40-plus years at citizen taxpayer, very different jurisdictions, I've never experienced a 0.00% increase. So it's welcome. It's doubly welcome, because I want you to know, I used this when I became aware of it to have a candid conversation with the Limerick School Board Deputy, Dr. Lynch, where I'm a commercial taxpayer. And I told him if he doesn't reduce his budget the way Rockville set it, come close to 0.00, I would write a letter to the editor, come to the budget hearing, and embarrass them. Their budget hearings tonight, they lowered the rate. I'm here, I'm not there. But thank you for influencing my tax bill in two jurisdictions. On the 0.00, does that apply to all classes?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But again, as you know, we have adjusted base proportions, which change things.
That's a separate craziness. And the budget balance forward, what are you allocating from the current budget year to go to the next budget year? How much?
$2.8 million.
And how does that compare to previous years?
We keep those $2.8 million every year.
It keeps rolling the same?
Keeps rolling.
Okay.
So that's what we plan to end the year with, with a, you know, with a fund balance of an additional $2.8 million that we can roll forward. If we come up with more than $2.8 million, it goes into reserves. Less than $2.8 million, it comes from reserves, but we will always try to maintain that $2.8.
So with the extra state aid... So with the extra state aid we received this year and will receive in the future, can we use that state aid to retire debt service without prepayment penalties to save us more money into the future?
We can look at that in some additional, we're, we're still early on in our current bond issues. We had refinanced three separate bonds a number of years ago. Those, that's the bond issues that are dropping off right now. So as soon as it becomes available to us, which I believe is another three years before we can refinance them, we will absolutely look at that.
Well, I wasn't talking about refinancing, prepayment without penalty to save us an expense. That's what I was advocating, and I wish you would look into that because I think it has a positive budget impact for future years. And this year especially with the state of the economy and state of the, many people in the village hurting, 0.00% is welcome. And I don't know how you do an encore next year, and I was trying to give you a creative way to try to do it by attacking one of the issues, you know, your salaries, your overhead, they all change. But if you do something about the, of the debt service, I think that would go a long way in helping you stabilize the tax rate into the future. So I didn't expect an answer tonight, I just wanted some research on that.
Sure, absolutely.
Don't we have a large amount of debt service coming off next year as well, Mr. Bartels?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
That's good. I, I think I told Mr. Bartels a few years ago this day would happen. So before you go for the next bond issue, we'll keep knocking off debt service. Pilots, we receive a number of pilots in the village. Didn't they increase this year, but I couldn't find where in the notations here in the budget that I picked up outside.
They're, they're all part of our revenue, local revenue.
But you don't break out separately pilots, do you?
Uh, I, we do when we receive them, not for presentations to the public. We don't really do that. We, we can certainly do that at some point.
We always hear so many negative things with respect to pilots, and I think it would be helpful for the school board as well as the public to know when a pilot, the pilots increase. And, and as I calculate, especially from, probably our biggest pilot is Avalon, that there should have been increases for this year.
Yep, about $80,000.
Okay, that's it, bingo. But I, I think that's something you should let the public, taxpaying public know about, that as stewards of our money, that you're cognizant of these increases in, in pilots. Because we only heard bad things when Avalon was first proposed and the hundreds of kids that were going to go to school from there and Section 8 housing, and I, I don't think it has turned out the way everyone had forecasted in the beginning after we spent $1.5 million of village money and insurance money and litigation. The playground, Mr. O'Shea, the discussion of the playground reminds me of dealing with siblings, that everyone has to be equal. And we know it can't always be that way. And I just trust, in the past, those playgrounds were donated and run, funds raised by PTAs and other groups. And for insurance purposes, you're probably better off statanizing and protecting us liability lawsuits and, and treating it differently into the future and all the teacher society. So I appreciate you doing it this way. And again, I thank you for 0.00. I can't say it enough because I don't think I'll ever be able to say it again. So have a good rest of the evening. I have one more meeting to go to.
Good luck. Thanks so much, Jeff.
You'll, you'll miss me at the next two opportunities for visitors, but I'll take a rain check.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming. Maybe I would like to step down to the microphone? Could you just come over and use this microphone, please? Thank you. This is the guest one.
Booby-trapped the way over there.
I know, sorry about that. Thank you.
Elizabeth Arnott, 120 Berkshire Road. So I had a quick question for Mr. Bartels. Can you explain the increase in travel for the super's office? It went up a 1,200% increase. 1,200%? Is that correct? Yes.
Well, I think the numbers you're looking at are last year's actual numbers to a regular budget number. I believe the budget number did not change from this year to next year. So it's, you're really looking at actuals, the actual number, the actual amount that was spent in 1920 compared to a budget amount for 2021 and the budget for 2022, 2122.
So it didn't increase at all?
The budget did not increase at all, no.
Can you explain that?
Yeah, we, we have...
What was the number last year? What was the number this year?
The budget for 2021 was, I believe, about $1,500, and the budget for 2122 is $1,500. The amount that we spent in 1920 was about $200. So we didn't spend near the budget, but we have about 1,500 for transportation, depending on what conferences the superintendent goes to. If they don't go, then the money goes back to fund balance.
Okay. Does the reduction in transfer to capital by 900K mean that we are spending less on capital improvements in the district than... And, and will that capital improvements, will it need to be funded through a bond instead?
No, so we have...
Because we reduced that, right?
Yeah, we, we have, there's two parts of the budget. One is debt service and one is transfer to capital. So if we go out for a bond issue, we end up with debt service that we have to pay off over a number of years. On the transfer to capital, it's an amount that we pay directly. We don't finance it, we don't borrow for it, we just pay that off directly. So that number last year was 1.8 million dollars of capital improvements that we just paid directly for. For next year, we had proposed 900,000, which would be a reduction in how much we had allocated for those capital improvements, a reduction of 900,000. So as you heard tonight, we're going to, we want to push that back up to 1.2, bless you, back up to 1.2 million. So the reduction would only be 600,000. So that would continue as to allow us to make improvements and repairs to our buildings.
And regarding the 100,000 that we just spent on barriers, Garden City just removed their barriers last week. Are we planning on doing that as well?
No, we're not. We're, there, there were some conversations that we had with the Department of Health about layered mitigation tactics. We bought those in understanding that they were layers that would mitigate the threat of COVID, so we're going to keep them up as we want, as much protection as we can since we've purchased them for those purposes.
But it's understood that they do not serve any purpose at this point?
No.
They, they are not necessary, right?
They're not, they're not recommending that by the CDC, yes.
Right. They are not recommended and we don't need them. It makes challenge, it's very challenging for children to learn through them. It's more effective for the kids to be able to see the board to, for the kids in the back. It's very challenging. If you sit behind them all day long, and you should try that, in a classroom, sitting for six hours in the back, trying to see around the barrier.
I, I would say I have tried them, certainly, and I definitely walked through some of these buildings.
Would it be a more enjoyable experience for the kids without them?
I think anything would be more enjoyable than the situation that we're put in throughout the course of this year.
Then we should make that happen.
So, but we are, we are going to keep them. They are a mitigation strategy and they've worked for us, so we're going to continue to use them.
Any other budget questions? Come on down.
This is my accessory.
Just lower that mic. There you go. Thank you.
I don't know if this really falls into budgets. My first time here. My name is Roxanne, 155 Kennedy Avenue. But I kind of got here late because I had to walk over, and I came in at the tail end of talking about curriculum and that it goes to budget. I am an educator myself, so I can appreciate budget and curriculum. And I was interested to hear about, are we, is this curriculum that we, we're calling it SEL, and SEL and CRT aren't really the same thing? So are we, are we working with the Morningside Center?
So we are working with the Morningside Center at the middle school. They are training teachers on restorative practice. They're working with 20 teachers. It is not a curriculum. They're training them on restorative practice in terms of working with, working with children becoming more reflective on actions.
Okay.
So it's a two, the training, they only had two trainings, I believe, thus far. So it's a process for the teachers to be trained. So there's no off-the-shelf curriculum from them.
Okay. Do, so who chose the Morningside Center? Do we know what these people are all about? Because I am a minority, okay? And they have some very disturbing things to say. May I finish?
Oh, of course.
And they also are not about including, including everyone. It is about really separating people into groups. And as an educator, teaching the social, emotional well-being of a child, this is not a good choice. Having children feel bad about who they are or what color their skin is, is not a good choice. And I say this as an educator and a parent and a minority.
Okay. So I thank you for coming up, and I will tell you how we got in with the Morningside Center. We had some staff members who were trained on restorative practice. So I know the Morningside Center has an SEL, a racism component, and a restorative practice component that's listed on their website. We are strictly being trained, training teachers in, and again, 20 teachers in restorative practice. At this point, again, there's no curriculum. We never take anything right off the shelf. We vet things, we meet with people, we discuss the goals, and our goal is never to make children feel bad. And I, I will talk to you as a parent and an educator. We have been, our, I wish I could tell you that there are kids that don't feel disconnected. There are. I wish I could tell you there's not cyberbullying. There is.
Oh, I know there is.
So what, what restorative practice does is it actually becomes, it's a reflective, like you have a create, you create a safe space, and you have kids reflect on why, why did you do that? And how did it make the other person feel? And how did it make the community feel rather than just suspension?
No, that's amazing.
And that's, and honestly...
But what does Racism Baby have to do with it? Or that book about, what's the correct name? I'm not saying the correct name.
No, that's actually...
Is it Racism Baby?
It is.
Okay. So that is not teaching restorative practices.
Those are two, we have two separate things.
There are two separate questions.
And I'm happy to answer it. Racism Baby was piloted in, by two teachers in Strategies for Life, which is a character education class. After reflection and talking to Ms. McGinn, it is not added to the curriculum, but that is, that's where we went. We don't, our teachers wanted to try something and they tried that.
Well, as a teacher and as a parent, and I teach little children, okay? But I own a 12-year-old, okay? So I get the big picture here. I think a little bit more thought and a lot more delving into things and looking closely because I can promise you that the Morningside Center is a center of divisiveness. And as a child who was in a public school and was not someone who was fitting in, okay? Was different from everyone else. We've come a long way. And what's going on here now is going to set us back generations. So I will not vote for a budget where we're going to tear children apart and judge them on the color of their skin.
I assure you, this district has done everything on the opposite side of that.
But, but you can say that to me, and as an educator, I can look at you and appreciate that, but joining with the Morningside Center for anything they offer is not a positive thing. These are people that don't believe in the family structure. I've done my homework, okay? They offer implicit bias trainings for teachers, and teachers sit in a room, I can tell you, I was there. They don't know who I am. They don't know what I am. But they judged me because I looked like I was white. So there was something wrong, and you are made to feel less than if you are not a minority. And that I won't accept. So that's what this group does, so we can make it pretty and we can wrap it in a bow. But if it's garbage, it's still going to be garbage, and it's not right for the kids. Because what you're intending to do with social, emotional learning, I use Stanford Harmony, I get it. But that's not what this is. And it's not right. And I will not vote for my taxpayer dollars going, one penny going to the Morningside Center.
I also just want to clarify that we did use grant money for that specific...
Fabulous.
No, I know, and I, and I...
Doesn't change what it is.
And I understand, and I honestly encourage you to call the middle school and, and, and talk to the administration there and to really get a clear picture of what's going on.
I have a clear picture. I have, happen to have a nephew who's in, took a strategies class, so I have a really clear picture.
Okay.
And it's still, like I said, if you're partnering with those people who believe in such Marxist divisive things, it's a bad, it's a bad, it's a bad look. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to step up to the microphone regarding the budget? Okay, thank you. So the budget requires a roll call vote. It's a resolution for the board to take action on the budget figure. May have a motion to accept the proposed budget for the 2021-2022 school year to be presented to the voters of the Rockville Center Union Free School District on May 18th, 2021 in the amount of $124,098,943. Mrs. Farazani, do you vote yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Dionne, yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea, yes or no?
Yes.
Myself, Tara Hackett, yes, which carries, like I said, we have one absent voter this evening. Okay, I also need an, to ask for a motion to adopt the property tax report card. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Chang, we're going to move over to our public hearing regarding the code of conduct.
Yes, I will yield the floor to Dr. Maureen Lee to, to walk us through any changes and the updates to the code of conduct.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. So there's a New York State regulation that requires that the district code of conduct be developed in collaboration with students, teachers, administrators, and parent organizations, school safety personnel, and other school personnel, and shall be approved by the Board of Education, and that this code shall be reviewed annually. So I just read you the letter of the law and why we have a public hearing on the code of conduct and why we go through this review process. But the more important element of our review is the spirit of that law, which asks districts to annually consider the protocols and practices in regard to student discipline, the establishment and implementation of that discipline, and the good order and conduct that results from such systems. So I want to publicly thank the administrators, teachers, parents, and students who participated in this year's review. They are school administrators, Watson Principal Jen Pascarella, High School Assistant Principal Pat Walsh, High School Supervisor of School Counseling and Student Support Services Lori Levy, and Middle School Assistant Principal Mike Duggan. Then I had two social workers, an elementary social worker, Lisa Panabianco, and a high school social worker, Nellie.
school social worker Nicole Noor. Parents that participated were Tara Kelly from Riverside, Jennifer Newhouse from Covert, Jennifer Bernabeau from the middle school, and Cindy Vappel from both Wilson and the high school. We had a high school teacher, Michael Masili, and a high school student, Molly Price, and of course, our district clerk, Jackie Wong, as well as myself. So every one of the participants was able to give us a very unique perspective and their experience to help us review the code. And as you could hear from my descriptors, all levels were represented. So the code of conduct reviews, review allows us to assess the efficacy of our disciplinary code, incorporate evidence-based practices, and update language to reflect current technology, terminology, and trends. So you may or may not recall that last year, we did a fairly extensive review of the code of conduct. And we created not only a code of conduct, but also changed the title to include guidelines for student character development and student support. In doing so, we expanded the terms and the glossary in that code. We expanded the rights and responsibilities of all the people that have to do with the implementation of this code. We emphasized the essential partners, meaning everyone from the superintendent, parents, teachers, students, and everyone in between. And we organized the narratives of the middle school and the elementary addendums into a couple of succinct charts, which allowed, you know, students and their parents to really see what the expectations were at those levels. And we did introduce some language around restorative practices throughout the code. So the major changes this year, and as I said, it was a fairly comprehensive change last year. And it was always our intention that over the course of the next couple of years, we would really take a look at this code and then continue to add the elements of character development and student support as we've gone along. And this year, we did so, we continued that, promoting a discipline system that also allows students to be reflective, to learn how to resolve conflict, and to problem solve when issues come about. Consistent with that, we did, we made the following changes I'd just like to point out over the course of the code. Throughout the code of conduct, Guidelines for Character Development and Student Support, that's a pretty long title, we went through and just cleaned it up so that most of the references were to, simply to the code. So you'll see the changes there. We added in student responsibilities a reference to helping fellow students who may plan to harm themselves or maybe struggling with adverse circumstances and substance use. So we kind of updated to our focus certainly in the last several years. We added social media accounts and Google Classroom as a means to distribute information to students and parents reflecting current technology and our current situation. We also reflected the use of the new online parent enrollment portal. We added bullets to the responsibilities of the Dignity Act coordinator and school counselors to reflect updated regulations. We updated the dress code. Under prohibited student conduct, we included language in regard to conduct in remote classes and digital workspaces, and I think that's readily apparent why we did that, and also on the misuse of account information and passwords related to that digital work. We changed the terminology in-school suspension to alternate study center, because that name was changed actually a couple of years ago, and we wanted to reflect that in the code. As I said earlier, we did add some narratives and expanded language on restorative practices. We added language recommending support for students with drug and alcohol infractions. One of the parents on the review committee is actually a drug and alcohol counselor, so she was able to really advise us on, you know, really what the additional steps should be when students return from long-term suspensions related to drug and alcohol use and abuse. We added language regarding transitions back to school after suspension and what supports we could put in place to help students to sort of learn their lessons. And then general language regarding a change in visitors, and that really had to do with the fact that we certainly had to change how we accepted visitors into our schools over this last year. So that's really the more specific changes we made, as well as the general trend in what we tried to do with the code of conduct for this year. The meetings took place virtually over three separate sessions. The code was divided into sections for more intensive reviews between our meetings based on high school, middle school, elementary teams, and central office teams. And then when we got back together, the entire committee reviewed all of the recommended changes. And what resulted was the document that we have for the board's review and for public review this evening.
Thank you. I know that was a yeoman's task. I could see it. This is a very long document, covers everything in the school district, so thank you to your committee and Dr. Leahy for all the work that they did on the code of conduct. Let's open it up for discussion with the board. Any items that you'd like to raise?
I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you very much. I know it was a monumental task, and it is a very lengthy document, and there were a lot of positive changes. I'm a little concerned with page 15, which is in regard to the dress code and the specific bullets regarding certain items of clothing that seem to be only items of clothing that are talking about what female students would possibly be wearing, tube tops, camisoles, the length of skirts and dresses. I think it should be more uniform in terms of gender. It seems a little bit like it's judging women for wearing something short, but there's no mention of how short a pair of shorts should be for a young man. Or the word tube top or camisole tank, I think the language needs to change so that it's more reflective of a more modern language, that if it's a shirt that's cut off in any fashion, maybe that's inappropriate to have body parts hanging out of shirts. If it's a short shirt on a man or a short shirt on a woman, whatever the rules may be, they should be equally applied.
So it's interesting, because I actually went back and looked, it was in the 2017-18 review, that some of this language was actually removed for the very reasons you cited, Mrs. Farazani. The high school team actually put some of that language back in this year. And the reason they cited was this, that there's actually a problem with the use of this clothing and the wearing of this particular clothing. And it's not just girls. It's actually also with boys whose expression is female, and they've started to see more and more the use of this clothing that's not just worn by girls, but also boys. So that was one of the reasons they specifically asked for that language to return. Now, when I talked to them afterwards to see just how married they are to specific clothing items, they're not. We could certainly go back and look to see if we could change it to more general items. But that's actually what's going on. Short, very short shorts in some of the males they've dealt with. And they also were very cognizant of the fact that some of this looked like it was oriented toward items of clothing girls would wear, females would wear. So adding the hoods, that they were specifically thinking about more, thinking about male students when they added that bullet, hoods are not permitted to be up during school hours, and also the references toward covering undergarments which apply to both male and female.
If it's a mention of the length of the item being worn on the bottom, whether it is be a skirt or a short or a dress, if the problem is the exposure of a leg, I don't think it should be slanted towards a female leg rather than a male leg. It's either inappropriate to have something so short on, and we want a certain length of a garment, or it's not. But I don't think it should be that depending on the item of clothing you have on, that's how short it should be. It should be a universal rule. It's either inappropriate to have something so short on, whether you're a male, you're a female, or you're a non-binary, or whatever you're considering to be your identity, you shouldn't have to make a difference in what you're wearing. It should be, if the length is inappropriate, the length is inappropriate.
So, okay, so the point they tried to make with me, and I'm open to how this maybe may change, is that these particular items, clothing, these particular items of clothing are worn both by males and females, boys and girls in this building. It's been the experience that they're starting to see issues with both. So they don't see this necessarily as language that's specific to girls. So if we took out-
Couldn't we just add shorts? Short skirts and dresses must be. Wouldn't that be a way to generalize it?
I feel like shorts used to be in here.
You think it was supposed to be shorts, skirts, and dresses?
Yes. Is that possible? That we lost an S and a comma? Sorry.
It's possible. I feel like we did talk about shorts.
I definitely, because, I mean, 2017, I kind of had the same conversation. And I remember talking about shorts, because I also remember the conversation of it's hard to find shorts that are longer than whatever the finger down, you know, when you hold your, you know, things down. So I feel like shorts were here at some point. But I think, you know, I read tube tops and camisole tops, and I see, and I see judging what women wear or girls wear. And if we somehow could make the language not seem so gendered.
More universal in a sense.
I agree.
I don't know how. I throw that back at you. But it feels gendered.
Even though she's saying it's not.
I know, but I read it. Mrs. Farazani reads it.
Right.
We read it as gendered.
Not only that, it's judgy in a way. You know, it's saying something about the person wearing it, and I don't know. It just, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth.
So let me bring it back and address it with the high school team again, because, you know, as I said in the beginning of my comments, they do see this as problematic right now, so they do want it addressed in terms of the specific types of clothing. They don't necessarily see it as gender-based at this point in time, but maybe we can come up with some more general language that could do the same thing.
Or just come up with terms with regard to sleeve, no sleeves, the length of a strap, the length of a short.
Bare shoulders.
Right. Without having to actually name the type of clothing in this way.
So universal in terms of the structure of it, rather than the actual item and the identification of the item?
Correct.
I never even heard of a camisole.
I had to tell John what a camisole is today.
I was like, what is a camisole? It's like something from the 30s, I thought, but.
You know, point taken also, because that's a good point in terms of fashion itself, the terms and things people wear are going to change. So more about the structure of the item rather than the actual identification of the item.
Right. I'm not saying I have a problem with having a dress code that's appropriate for schools so that it's, you know, but the terms may not be correct. That's all I'm saying.
Dr. Leahy, in the section for the first drug and alcohol offenses, I think I'm on page 24 in the document you sent us, the PDF document you sent us. The language in here is added, it talks about how they will, a first-time drug offense will automatically lead to a five-day suspension, talks about what the suspension purpose is for. But then it says, upon return from any drug-related suspension, the student will meet with his or her counselor to assess the needs. In addition to a five-day suspension, the student will have six school months' suspension. It should be May? May possibly, right? Not every student that gets the five-day initial suspension will then also meet with their counselor and get a six-month suspension. That's, seems like something that may happen in the future.
So again, this was the contribution of the high school team and the language that they chose and specifically included. So I will need to go back to the high school team to see if it is a possible outcome or a definite outcome. I think the way that they wrote this, it sounded to me like it is a definite outcome.
Right. And it's talking about a first-time suspense, where that would be an automatic five-day. But the way I'm reading it means it should be then that they would be reevaluated, and a six-month suspension may follow. I think we need the parameters of how that decision is made, but it doesn't seem to me like it would be an automatic, especially if it's a first-time offense. So I just want some clarification on that. Thank you so much.
I happen to read it as it's, you're suspended from school, you come back in five days, but you can't play on a sports team, be in the play, be anything like that for six months. So that's in addition to your five months as you, however, get past your-
Right. I just want to clarify that, because they talk about the first-time offense, so I wasn't sure if you get that the first time around or if that's something that may come later. Thank you.
Dr. Leahy, on page 19, I think it's 19, we talk about sexual harassment and complaints regarding sexual harassment being made to you. I feel like we just did a policy where complaints could be made to you or someone else. Was that, is that different? I thought there was someone, a female someone to complain to and a male someone to complain Or was that just the employee part of our sexual harassment? Because we did about three policies at one time.
Yeah, I'm just having a hard time remembering whether it was the employee part or the student, so I'm going to have to check.
Okay. I think that was the employee, to be honest with you, from when we were, talked about that at policy committee as well. But we can check it. I think we should check it, just to make sure that there doesn't need to be a male and a female person that people could choose to put the complaint to.
If you're trying to follow, your page numbers are different than these page numbers, on the printed version.
Seriously?
Yeah. It's a little-
Sorry.
That's all right. I'm just trying to, I'm just pointing out if anybody's following along.
Twenty-first century.
You're doing on the computer.
Twenty-first century, you got it, Maureen. Any other board questions or comments about the code?
Can you just go over, will this stay in public for X amount of time until the public has a chance to digest and review it?
It's supposed to be on the website for a month before the board.
Okay, thank you. A month from when we finalize it, or a month from today?
From the hearing.
From today.
From today.
A month from today.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, if there's no more board questions, again, would like to, on behalf of the board, thank the committee, Dr. Leahy, for all the hard work on the document. Open up the microphone for any questions or comments related to the code of conduct. Please step down to the microphone. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to our policies and superintendent recommendations. We had decided at the last meeting to keep our memorial policy in stage one. So as Mrs. Dionne had mentioned, the policy committee did reconvene with the, with our guests of Dr. Leahy and Mr. Murphy from the high school. We reviewed a lot of the language, tried to kind of zone in on some of the points that we had made in the past board meeting. So we'll open that one back up and open that up for discussion. We reworked our purpose a bit, truncated it a little bit, as Mrs. Dionne said, tried, based off of the feedback we had gotten through our expert, really tried to focus the purpose of the memorials policy on celebrating the lives of the lost members of our community, and then talk a little bit in more detail about permissible versus prohibited activities. Two points to make, any memorials that already exist on any of our facilities will continue to exist, and until the policy is finalized, we have a moratorium on any new memorials going up. So we'll just dive in. Questions and comments from the board on the memorials policy?
I have a question, page two. The last bullet in the first paragraph, approved Rockville Center Union Free School District student organizations may contribute collected- District student organizations may contribute collected funds to living memorials. And then bullet six on the prohibited memorials is, activity funds cannot be used to support, finance, or fundraise for memorialization. Proceeds from district co-curricular events or contests cannot be donated to agencies for memorialization.
So John, the way we had separated it was, was really about the purpose. So we had defined what a living memorial was earlier in the policy. And we defined them as scholarships, endowments, and educational programs. So what we're putting in the permissible section is that any of those classroom funds can be donated to one of those three purposes, which can, are considered living memorials. Where in the prohibited section, maybe we just have to wordsmith it to kind of explain what we mean by not fundraising for memorialization is, we don't want the student funds or any groups to be raising monies to create posters that say so-and-so, we miss you with a birth and a death date. That's really a memorialization tact, you know, tactic more than it is a donation to a living memorial. So I think we were trying to delineate those two things. If we have to wordsmith it a bit more, we're willing to do that. I will say, we, we wordsmithed this for two hours and we still didn't get it totally right. So your feedback is really important, how you read it after looking at it, maybe wasn't explained as well as we meant to.
Maybe we need to, to provide a description for memorialization.
Right.
In the top part, just, you know, like a definition.
I think so, because I think that was what we learned from some of the other things. Let's spell it out. What is allowed and what's not? So maybe we can get a little deeper into that. Would that make it better, John, more clear?
It would make it more understandable.
Okay.
It just was a little foggy there.
Okay. Mrs. Wong, could you make a note for us? We'll work on that definition for memorialization, please. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I think overall, you really took everything we talked about and made it happen in the policy. It really was, you know, it's a, it's a big transformation. It was very different, you know, whatever, two weeks ago or four weeks ago. And that's very important for, for the well-being of all, all the people that come to our schools. So very impressive.
Good. We appreciate it. Mr. Murphy and Dr. Leahy were very helpful to us. And Deb Caputo as well. We appreciate her very much for her help.
You, you spoke to the issue of transportation now. Is that something you can add to this somehow?
So we haven't yet, but we said that we would raise it at the public meeting and discuss it. So Mr. Murphy had raised a concern in Policy Committee that had not previously been brought up in any of our avenues so far. But there was a practice in the past where if we had lost a student by any means, a tragic death, that the district had provided transportation to the services. And research that's come out since that we've done that last has said that that's not an appropriate thing to do. I think where we had done it in the past was out of a good place. We thought these students would like to have an avenue to grieve. Maybe they weren't able to go with their parents because it was during a school day. So this would be maybe a safe place to get students to, so it was always, had done, been done in good intention. And it's not something we'd want to take away to hurt anybody. But we also have a concern, if it's being raised to us, that it might not be the appropriate thing to do. Mr. Murphy said, I hate to throw another wrench at you, but I think you need to discuss this because it doesn't appear here. And it probably should in some fashion, whether it's allowable or not. So I throw it back out to the board for discussion in terms of, you know, how you feel about that.
I, I really think we need to wait to really discuss it with Mr. Murphy because he definitely had a point of view, his, his PPS staff, and maybe Dr. Leahy can, and talk on this. But his staff came to him and said, you should not be doing this. And, and we pushed back on him and said, why? So I, it seems wrong to try to make a decision without knowing what that background is.
Oh, I'm not making a decision. I was just referencing where, you know, it's, if it, either way, it should be placed in, in my opinion, because it's past practices. We have to steer that in the right direction, have whatever's best for our kids. So that's, I was just asking for a place, I wasn't asking for a compensation.
I think he felt the same way you do, John. It needs to appear somewhere, whether it's permissible or it's not. It needs to appear because it had been something that had been done and more information had come out since. So he just kind of threw that to us to think about. And so we wanted to at least raise it because it's something we hadn't spoken about as a group or with the public yet. So Dr. Leahy, I don't know if you want to chime in? I do agree, we'll have Mr. Murphy's input at the next meeting, but you know, if you'd like to add to that conversation.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's, it's pretty straightforward that there's a concern that when students go in a large group without the benefit of the support of their families and parents and guardians, that there's, there's potential for a student that becomes, you know, so upset and is not able to, you know, get the immediate support that we would like them to have. So that's really it. You know, the flip side of that is, there's a lot of strength that comes in being around friends and, you know, sharing grief with others that, you know, shared their relationship with a, with a student or staff member. But I think the overwhelming guidance in the literature is that we really have to make sure that these children and students are supported by individual family members or, you know, a support system.
Thank you. So how would we like to proceed? I know, like we said, we were going to invite Mr. Murphy. We could leave it at Stage One, get that input. We could move what we've built so far to Stage Two if we want to start moving it along. We have done a lot of work on it, but I'd like the input of the board to decide where you would like to move it to next.
I'm very comfortable stepping forward because you've, you've made such, you know, great changes and great, with the, with the knowledge that we do need to address that one, that one issue and place it on one column or the other. That's, that would be my only, Liz, you didn't, at last meeting, you didn't really like moving it forward or we were going to add or change.
No, I feel like we're still sort of, I mean, it feels like it's coming together, but this is like the, the funeral is a big, big chunk. But I suppose, as you said, we can edit it in Stage Two or let it sit there.
Would the subject be, be broadened to include, because right now it's just memorials. Would it be memorials, funerals? Are we, are we broadening it to cover more territory than just a memorial policy?
I, I think still we want to focus as the memorial and what it means because of what the purpose of it was. But I think in going to a service is a way to memorialize somebody. It's, it's in the immediate, it's not a longer-term memorial activity. If it is something we're going to prohibit, I think it does fit in this policy in that section if that's something we decide we're not going to do. Because again, it's, it is a memorial activity. And we're, we're talking about different activities. So I don't think we'd have to change the whole scope, just add it.
I would be comfortable moving it forward to Stage Two and with the caveat that we're going to add a portion to address that issue that Mr. Murphy brought up. Because we did do so much work on it.
Okay. I feel comfortable as well because I really feel we did spend a lot of time vetting it as a group. We did have an expert. We have had guests come in on it. We'd like to see it move forward as well. So we'll move it to Stage Two. We could always keep it there for another meeting. If we're not ready to move it to Stage Three, I think we're, we're moving along and we've come to good consensus on this policy. So we'll move it to Stage Two.
Could I, I think the, this is my take, and the transportation issue is not that students go to the service.
No.
It's going with a group of people from the school.
It's provided transportation.
But if a student goes with their mother or father, their support is there.
Correct.
So they don't leave their, they, someone could leave there devastated and not have anywhere to turn. If mom and dad are with her, with them, then that's not what the guidance tells you don't do. It's sending the bus from the school.
Correct. And I don't think that we should be policing people's family decisions on attending services. That's the appropriate thing that people feel they want to do with their family or with their child. That's still up to a family. So we, we definitely are not going to pass an opinion about that. But it was more about district-provided transportation to and from a service. I think that's a good clarification, Mr. O'Shea. Thank you. Okay, so thank you, Mrs. Wong. We will pass that over again. Dr. Leahy and Mr. Murphy, thank you very much. And then lastly, in terms of policy, we had 3280, which was our community use of facilities form. And this one is in, let me just see which stage that one was in. Is it in three, Jackie?
Yes, it's three.
Yeah. We're in the final stage on that. Any questions about that? Okay, thank you. So we'll move that one forward for approval at the next meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, opportunity for superintendent, Mr. Chang.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, one of the things that I, I think is important to, to always remember is that in any opportunity where we are under a lot of, you know, different circumstances, things that we are not familiar with, is to make sure that we take away what it is that we're learning. And as much as we've been in the pandemic world, we are, we are trying extremely hard as a, as an educational institution to get back to the, to the norm of understanding what it is that we should be doing. Going back to building our vision, going back to making sure that we attach that vision to our core values. And then also to be able to execute and maintain and build upon what we have here as an excellent educational institution. In that vein, a lot of our conversation has to come from our leaders and the educational leaders that we have. They have an abundance of information. They have an abundance of historic knowledge. And they have an abundance of will to want to progress. And I know this because if you started having these conversations with all my principals, and I look forward to continuing those. And the purpose of those conversations is to not only edify the process in which we think about, but also to look at and envision what we do for the future. And in order for us to do that with fidelity, we need to ensure that we look at ourselves and understand that there are, not that there are flaws, but we look at ourselves as a constant organization that is in progress. And that's what I want to kind of keep in, in front of mind as we look towards, you know, a budget that, that holds dear to the values of what we've had here in Rockville Center, but also looks to make sure that we enhance those opportunities for well-rounded and balanced experience for our students. The mark of a great institution, great educational school district, is not about what we look at, at the end of their schooling with us as a district, but it is about what continuation of that level of learning that happens beyond our doors. And as we look to that, we're going to be formulating and looking at a lot of things that we can do. We're going to be energized. I know that I'm getting energized with the conversations that I'm having, particularly with the curriculum department as well as the principals, on getting back to our focus, getting back to our core and delivering on the fact that we want to make sure that we're providing not only equality, but an excellent experience that allows our students to be able to flourish. So that will be top of mind as we go into the summer and spring months. And that's a commitment that I think we as educators make. We don't get everything right, but we certainly try to make sure that we learn from every step that we take. And we'll continue that wholeheartedly as part of our mantra moving forward.
Thank you. Opportunity for board members, Mr. O'Shea.
I'd just like to speak to tonight, we had the, the privilege of honoring five or six of our students. And what a great thing it is that we can do. Students who achieve academically, give back to their community in an unbelievable way, and contribute to society in general. And I think those are the things that we need to honor in our kids. And we need to make all our children, as we're coming to the end of this school year, especially this class of seniors, I'm saying, because they've had the longest time in this strange world that we've, we are in, to, you know, make sure that they are honored in every way we possibly can to, you know, show them how proud we are of them, how successful they are in these hard times, and help them move forward with the rest of their lives as how they're moving forward. So that's all I'd like to say. It was very nice, it's very nice to have our kids and be able to praise them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dion.
Okay, well, I'm going to say the same thing.
You could say the same thing.
So I do want to congratulate Ethan, Sophia, and all of our amazing musicians, even the ones who didn't show up. It is amazing, it's just wonderful to have the kids back. We say it every time we come here and they're playing volleyball or they're playing football. It's just great to, to see them. And I think this was, I think we said, it was the first time we've had students show up at our meeting. So it was great to see them. Congratulations to them. I don't want to talk about COVID. I would like to thank Superintendent Chang and Mr. Bartels. I have not been coming to board meetings for 49 years or whatever, but to have a budget that increases our staff, increases support for all of our students, provides capital improvements, and keeps the tax levy at a 0% increase is phenomenal. It's something I, I've never thought would ever happen. I'm so impressed. It's a budget that is respectful to our taxpayers and ensures that our students and their education is front and center. So thank you so very much. And I just encourage everybody to vote on May 15th, 18th, maybe 18th.
Thank you. Mrs. Farazani?
It's getting late. I just want to say I'm very proud of our salutatorian and our valedictorian, Ethan and Sophia. What a nice example they are of everything we embody in the school district. And our wonderful musicians, even those who probably are at another sport or some kind of activity and couldn't make it. Congratulations to all of you as well. And I just want to say thank you for all the hard work and all the things that we've discussed tonight. It's been a large amount of work put into the Code of Conduct and the budget. And I appreciate the work that everyone has put into it and curriculum as well. And I applaud anyone who comes to the microphone to let us know how you're feeling. It's not always easy to do. And some of the topics are not easy to say in public, but we do appreciate knowing how people feel and what's important to the community. And I appreciate you coming and doing that. Thank you.
One last plug for the Rockville Center Education Foundation event on Saturday. Please check them out. Support them, they support our kids. And again, a big thank you to them for everything they've done for us. Dr. Sampaino and her team have done a great job this year with their grants. I also want to congratulate Ethan and Sophia. Loved meeting them, very impressed with their resumes. And our music students always are phenomenal and I'm really proud of those that achieved such high accolades this year. Thank you to Dr. Zuar for joining us. It's nice to see some of these people in person. We see each other on Zooms and talk on phones, but it's always better to be in person. And I want to echo something Mrs. Farazani just said as well. We, we have meetings twice a month and they're your meetings, they're the public's meetings. And they're the appropriate places for sure to raise whatever you'd like to raise. There are other opportunities to get in touch with us. We have five elected board members who have put themselves out there and have really, I think, been very willing to listen to the community and are eager to hear what you have to say. Any conversations you'd like to have with any of your board members are welcome. What is difficult is for anybody up here to try to govern things that are happening on social media if that's not coming to us directly. So I really do encourage any member of the public that has a question to raise it with your child's teacher. If you have a building-level concern, raise it with your principal. If you have a curriculum-level, budget-level, or special ed concern, please raise it with one of our administrators. You have your superintendent, you have your board. You have many levels and ways to raise concerns and ask questions, and we really ask you to do that directly. Social media is, is a blessing and a curse. It's a wonderful way to communicate with each other, but it's not an easy way for any member up here to be able to answer questions directly. And we always do encourage that. We're here for you. We want to help everybody through it. We are here for the kids. And all I can say is, it is a joy to see our children thriving. Our numbers are coming down. We have a lot of positive things to share. We've had a tough year because it's been a tough year. But I really think that this district has prevailed and has done many wonderful things for our children. Our staff has been phenomenal and fluid and flexible. And we really do appreciate the work that everybody's put into it. No less, everybody to the left of me and the work they've done on this budget and in preparation for September, which is where we are starting to put our focus next and is an important thing to do. We want to return as much level of normalcy to our students as possible. So if we can keep this going, keep it up, I think we're headed in the right direction. So thank you to all of our parents and our students, staff, everybody involved in making this year a success. I'm going to open up the microphone now. Again, I think we've been a little lapsed in keeping time, but we didn't have a ton of guests, so we're going to try to keep time as best we can. If you are able to join us at the microphone for any general comments and questions, please state your name and your address. And opening up this mic over here.
Erica Messier, 493 Rose Lane. I just wanted to start by thanking the board and the district administration for hearing our request for a new playground at Covert. I think this is going to be a really huge win for our kids. And I know that the Covert community is going to be very excited to hear that, should the budget pass, they'll be getting a beautiful new playground. I do have one follow-up question about the desk barriers. And to be clear, I fully support following CDC guidance to drive decisions about mitigating COVID within our schools. I understand that when school opened, there was no data on what COVID would do in schools. Hence, I can appreciate the conservative stance the district took regarding COVID protocols. However, as the fall went on, the data showed that schools were not super-spreaders. In fact, there was very little in-school transmission of COVID. Consequently, we saw CDC guidance for schools become less restrictive. While many surrounding school districts revised protocol, Rockville Center was comparatively slower. On March 19th, the CDC again put out new guidance in which they recommended the removal of desk barriers. As Rockville Center has only recently brought all of its students back, I can understand that there is hesitation to remove the barriers as they would then have only been enormous waste of money. In my opinion, as a parent and an educator who currently has her students' barriers removed, I do not think that there is any reason to keep our children in a more restrictive environment than the CDC is recommending. While the barriers allowed our students back into the building, for which we are eternally grateful, they are now unnecessarily preventing them from achieving their full potential. You have followed the CDC guidance to a T and then some thus far, and I really urge you to do so now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public like to come down? Thank you very much. Every year, the BOCES also holds their election of their board trustees, and they also have an approval of the BOCES proposed administrative operations budget. So can I have a motion to approve the Nassau BOCES proposed administration operations budget for the 2021-2022 school year?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. They also have three returning incumbents running for three seats. Can I have a motion to elect the Nassau BOCES trustees?
So moved.
A second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2021 public work session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of the financial reports as listed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And finally, can I have a motion to approve items for action A and B?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Wong, please remind us of our next meeting. Is it May 6? May 6. Budget hearing. Thank you very much. Good night. Be well.